Okay.
All right. Good evening and welcome to the North Bend City Council meeting for October 22nd, 2024 at 7:00 PM here in the council chambers. Welcome to everybody who is here in person and then for those who are watching online. I'd like to call the meeting to order and say the Pledge of Allegiance. We'll have Counselor Gaul lead us since this is his second to last meeting.
I am one of the United States of America and consider you a member of our society. One nation, under God, indivisible, with no limitations at all.
Ever seen someone say the pledge with such a big smile?
I mean, he might have, he's got two meetings left before he goes off into retirement here. So we gotta make the most of them.
It's a bummer. It's a bummer, Counselor Gaul.
Well, we'll go ahead and have our city recorder help us with our roll call.
Counselor Jones.
Here.
Counselor Hamilton.
Here.
Counselor Garboden.
Here.
Mayor Igloke.
Here.
Counselor Gaul.
Present.
Counselor Schultz.
Here.
Counselor Nora.
Present.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Number three on the agenda is our consent calendar. Is there a motion from the council?
I move to accept the consent calendar as written.
Second.
All right. Heard a first from Counselor Jones, a second from Counselor Hamilton. Any discussion? All in favor of accepting the consent calendar as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number four is public comment and I believe we have one person online this evening and nobody here in person for that. All right, well, before we begin public comment, I'd like to say thank you for participating in public comment this evening. The public comment period is an essential part of local government meetings. Each person has three minutes to speak and our governing body takes input into consideration. However, in observance of Oregon Open Meeting laws, this isn't a time for dialogue, but rather a time for us to listen to you. Our city administrator and city recorder are taking any notes of action if needed. So I believe we have a Mr. Edward Shane Compton, or Shane, as he likes to be called, online. So Shane, were you able to hear all that? I think you're on mute, so if you want to unmute here, we'll take care of that for you and then you can begin your three minutes.
Do it. Pass it to one of you.
Okay.
We can hear you.
Hello? Okay, yes, I can hear you.
Okay.
Okay. Yes, I just want to address the city of North Bend and the council regarding the properties on North Broadway that received the citation or the warning a few months ago. And I've been working with the department, the building departments. I completed an application for a new foundation on one dwelling, which is the 2451. And I'm requesting additional time to evaluate and select the following options on 2419. And 2419 is a little rougher situation, so I'm evaluating whether or not to put a new foundation or to remove the structure. I'm just requesting time to 11/2, November the 2nd, '24, to give my application for either removal or new foundation on that particular property. I did, I did submit a timeline for 2451. There's, I have four steps or four dates on that timeline. And by the 15th of next year, which is January 15th, the house would be reset and bolted on the new foundation, which has been inspected and approved. And there may be copies of my handwritten letter somewhere there within your chambers tonight. And so that's, I'm open to any questions anyone may have or down the road.
That would be down the road. Tonight, it's just our time to listen to you and I'm sure our staff will reach out.
Yeah, and, and so the last month, I've been down there for over a month and believe it or not, it's just been continual cleanup. One of the things, one of the hidden gems that we found on the property is that before we purchased it, and this has had to happen years ago and continually happened for a number of years, that garbys was just thrown out into the yard. And over time, the weeds and the grasses and the flowers have kind of found a home there. And so when you dig down into the, into, into the dirt, you're actually digging down about six or seven inches of still hitting debris underneath there. So, so we've got about, we still have about, oh gosh, I'd say probably another $600, $700 of dump fees that will be, that will be involved with in terms of cleaning that up. Although you don't see it, you walk, you think, but you're walking on top of trash. That's going to be cleaned up also. I think I've spent about $4,700 in cleanup costs in the last six weeks or so.
All right, well, thank you for your comments tonight. And as stated before, this is our time to listen to you and I'm sure the staff, the staff will follow up with you on any questions or issues.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Thank you. So that takes us out of public comment into Agenda Item Number Five, which is our public hearing case file number 627-24000026 PLNG. I have a, some information in front of me for this public hearing 2078, correct? It's the one that we're doing here. Okay. So this is a time for a public hearing on ordinance number 2078 and ordinance vacating portions of right-of-way contained within Block 12 of Midland Addition to North Bend, Coos County, Oregon. At this time, I will open the public hearing. Going to ask the counselors if there are any conflicts of interest or ex parte contacts to report. Okay. Seeing none, will the staff please present their report?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. So before you as a vacation, as we discussed last night, and the long and short is that the applicant has received 69% of, 69% consent of the affected property owners, 100% of all adjacent property owners. And one of those affected property owners was in opposition. The planning department did respond in writing, addressing the opposing party's concerns and have not received any communications back from that party. Notice was posted on the location and published in the World Newspaper in accordance with ORS 271. And assuming that the easement that would be worked out with city engineering staff is recorded prior to finalizing this vacation, public interest would not be prejudiced by this vacation. I'd be happy to take any questions or provide any clarification as needed.
Any questions on the staff report at this time? All right, I'll now open the public testimony portion of the public hearing. Written testimony has been entered into the record and provided to members of the council and staff. There is a three-minute time limit per speaker and each speaker must state their name and address to the record. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of ordinance 2078? Seeing none? Is there anyone in wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none? I'll now close the public testimony portion. Do any members of the council have any additional questions about this matter for staff? No additional questions? If there's no discussion, I'll now close the public hearing at this time. So that is number five on the agenda to close the hearing. Now that'll take us to item six, which is ordinance 2078. This brings us to ordinance number 2078 and ordinance vacating portions of right-of-way contained within Block 12 of Midland Addition to the North Bend City, or North Bend, Coos County, Oregon. I'll now ask the staff to give, no, is that right? Hold on.
There's a prior motion, at least in the documents, on page 13.
So if I'm following the script, I would now ask the staff to give any report, but he just did, so I'm just gonna skip that part unless there's any additional reports. And then it would be first reading by title only. Let me just make sure I have the correct paperwork. Let's cross that off. Okay, so the staff already gave a report, so now entertain a motion to have the first reading by title only.
I move to have the title of the ordinance, of the ordinance read to the record by title only.
Okay. First from Counselor Jones and a second from Counselor Garboden. Mr. Wolf? Or, let's see, so we have a first and a second. Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor of the first reading be by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Wolf.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number 2078 and ordinance vacating portions of right-of-way contained within Block 12 of Midland Addition to North Bend, Coos County, Oregon.
Thank you. I'll now entertain a motion to have the second reading be by title only.
I move that ordinance 2078 be read, the second reading by title.
The first from Counselor Gaul and a second from Counselor Hamilton. Any discussion? All in favor of the second reading be by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So Mr. Wolf.
Thank you. Ordinance number 2078 and ordinance vacating portions of right-of-way contained within Block 12 of Midland Addition to North Bend, Coos County, Oregon.
I'll now entertain a motion to adopt ordinance 2078.
I move that city council adopt ordinance number 2078 based on the facts and findings presented in case file number 627-24000026 PLNG and the testimony received during the public hearing.
Second.
Had a first from Counselor Jones and a second from Counselor Garboden. Any further discussion? All right, I'll ask our city recorder then for, help us for a roll call vote.
Counselor Jones, question.
I am for the ordinance.
Counselor Hamilton.
For the ordinance.
Counselor Garboden.
For the ordinance.
Mayor Igloke.
I too am for the ordinance.
Counselor Gaul.
For the ordinance.
Counselor Schultz.
For the ordinance.
Counselor Nora. For the ordinance. Thank you.
Okay, that was Agenda Item Number Seven and the ordinance passes. So we will go ahead and move on to number eight, which is Resolution 3360. No?
Same, same thing.
Okay. So yes, so now we will move on to, is that number seven?
Number seven.
Number seven is public hearing, consideration of rate increase. So public hearing Resolution 3360 authorizing North Bend sanitation monthly increase rates. This is the time set for a public hearing on authorization for North Bend Sanitation Incorporated's monthly rate increases, Resolution 3360. At this time, I will open the hearing. Are there any conflicts of interest or ex parte conversations from the council to report? Hearing and seeing none, will the staff please present their report? I know there was a report presented last night, but is there any additional information that needs to be read at this time?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay. I will now open the public testimony portion of the public hearing. Written testimony has been entered into the record and provided to members of the council and staff. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker and each speaker must state their name and address for the record. Is there somebody wishing to speak in favor of authorizing the monthly increase rate for the, for North Bend sanitation? Seeing none? Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none? I will now close the public testimony portion. Do any members of the council have any additional questions about this matter to staff? No additional questions? If there's no further discussion, I will now close the public hearing at this time. So the next step would be to entertain a motion to approve the requested fee for North Bend sanitation as authorized in Resolution Number 3360 as outlined in the proposed rate schedule attached.
I move to approve the request fee increase for North Bend sanitation as authorized in Resolution Number 3360 and outlined in the proposed rate schedule attached.
Second.
Had a first from Counselor Schultz and a second from Counselor Gaul. Any questions? No, no further questions or discussion? All in favor of the motion to, what Mrs. Schultz said? The, the Resolution 3360, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Sorry, Counselor Schultz.
You know I'm a teacher.
Yeah, I'm Mrs. Schultz to me. Thank you, Counselor Schultz. Okay, so that would take care of number eight. Did you do everything you needed there, Ms. City Recorder? Okay. Number nine is the North Bend Library Ferguson Transfer Company Services Agreement. There's a motion on page 64.
I move that the city council approve the services agreement through Ferguson Transfer Company in the amount of $12,199.35.
Second. Heard a first from Counselor Jones, a second from Counselor Schultz. Any, any, any further discussion? All in favor of the, to the city to approve the services agreement from Ferguson Transfer Company in the amount of $12,195.35, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That was number nine on the agenda. Now we're on to number 10. Is there a motion from the council?
I move that the city council approve the lease agreement with U. Jen Lodging Incorporated.
Second.
I heard a first from Counselor Hamilton, second from, we're pointing at each other, but I'm gonna go with Counselor Jones on that one. First and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor for the, all in favor of the motion for the city council to approve the lease agreement with U. Jen Lodging Incorporated, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Number 11 on the agenda is an appointment to the Coos Bay Estuary Management Plan Steering Committee. On page 89, there is a suggested motion last night during the work session. Felt like I got a verbal yes from our city planner that he would be okay with that appointment.
I move to appoint our city planner, Derek Payne, to this very important joint steering committee for the Estuary.
All second.
A first from Counselor Jones and a second from Counselor Hamilton. Any discussion? All in favor then to appoint Derek Payne, our city planner, to the Coos Bay Estuary Management Plan Steering Committee, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. May the force be with you. All right, that takes us to 11. No, that was 11, so that takes us to 12. This is any action if, from executive sessions, which we had none. So we can move on to number 13, which is our city administrator report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Council. Copies are published online, also distributed via email. The council has theirs in their boxes. Otherwise, a couple of things I want to point out. The state volleyball tournament, 3A, 4A divisions, will be here in North Bend, Coos Bay, November 8th and 9th. And so that's exciting. I know that the fire department, the police department have teamed up, they're hosting. And I know some staff are volunteering, so it's a great thing for us and then you'll start to see it all on the reader boards. The fire department just wrapped up their Miss Flame, annual Miss Flame. And so the four women got daily transportation to school. They just happen to all be located in the same neighborhood, made it real easy this year. They also had a special firehouse lunch prepared by the department firefighters. They had some presentations, some commemorative items, including department jackets, blankets, fire safety education materials and traditional fire helmets. And then, of course, the actual crowning of Miss Flame at the football game. Unfortunately, they lost. Bad day for the Bulldogs. Some professional development. We're very proud to say that our library director is in China. This is because she was selected for the prestigious Oregon Library Association International Relations Roundtable, Horner Library Staff Exchange Program. And so she was one of the select few. And so earlier, we had delegates from China here in the state and now we reciprocated. And, and no, we're not paying for that. But, but the state is, it's all great. The Parks Department continues its tree management at State Street Park and Ferry Road Park. The council, I don't recall if it was on your watch or the previous, but we did the arborist, had them come in, do a whole arborist plan. And so as budget allows, it's multiple years, so we'll be working on this for several years. The cool thing is, is we have nice reciprocal agreement, so all the wood is being harvested, goes to the mill, and then we're actually getting some of that back. And so it significantly has eliminated cost. The other cool thing, staff-wise, is on Friday, we said goodbye to Sergeant Ryan Doyle with the department. He was a 13-year veteran with us, only to, on Monday, be sworn in as the police chief for the Coquill Police Department. So it's a homecoming for him.
Coquill or Respor?
Coquill. And so, so he's, he was a police officer, field training officer, firearms instructor, detective and patrol sergeant. So that was a lot of institutional knowledge and, and training that went out the door. However, as one door closes, another opens. I'm gonna read something because this, this email was very, very touching. Came from our police chief because we had a swearing-in on Monday shortly before Doyle was sworn in over at Coquill. It says, "Our newest hire, Edward Lopez, will be sworn in on Monday," which he was, "is a recently retired 25-year veteran of the Houston, Texas Police Department. The hiring of yet another certified officer is further example of our police department's excellent reputation to include our incentive packages, equipment and training." Now, what's interesting is this new officer specifically stated to me, with his credentials, he could have gone anywhere, but he specifically sought out North Bend because of the caliber of this department. And so it says volumes. And when I say he could have gone anywhere, by the way, he speaks two languages, which is also cool. But reading from Facebook, patrol officer Edward Lopez, who joined our department on Monday, so he's been a detective in the narcotics division, overdose unit, he's been a federal agent with the DA Task Force. He was with the gang division investigator, he was investigator with their child sexual abuse unit, he was investigator with their human trafficking unit, and he actually comes to us as a graduate of the University of Houston with a degree in business finance. And so it just shows you that we're actually getting laterals, which when I first got here was unheard of. We actually had folks leaving. So I just want to point that out and kudos to the chief and the department. Lastly, not a, lastly, but on the housing development, our, out of Public Works, our building department actually anticipates receiving the North Bend Housing Authority plans later this month. And of course, we anticipate Banger School to be demolished by the end of the year with construction permits being issued in January 2025 and project completion estimated around May of 2026. So that project's moving forward. And then I just returned late Saturday from the League of Cities 99th Annual Conference and it's always nice to hear North Bend get a lot of kudos. Appreciate the one counselor, she sent our parks engagement plan. We got a lot of feedback thanking North Bend for how much we actually engage our citizens in the community. And in fact, in the one session, they specifically called out North Bend for its levels constituent communications, where folks are like, "I don't know what's going in my community, but I sure know what's going to North Bend." And so it was a very, very positive and I actually recorded those comments. So I had no clue they were about to say that, but I was recording it because it was an important session. So that said, thank you and I'll hand it back to you, Madam Mayor.
Okay. All right, so after our city administrator's report, we'll go ahead and see if there's any committee reports. There, I don't believe we have any counselors that can report on any committee reports right now. That, so we'll go to council comments. We'll save Gaul for last, just in case he wants to milk these last few comments. We'll start down here with Counselor Jones.
So it really does just speak volumes that both a, one of our officers has been chosen as a police chief locally and that people from so far away are choosing North Bend. It just really says something about the strength of the team and it's amazing. It's really amazing. In particular, though, something else, I want to thank the counselors that I've spoken with in the last one and a half weeks, both in council and as individuals. I really appreciate all of you taking time to help me peel back my assumptions. It's super helpful. And I, I'm sorry that I require some extra energy and I promise you that I will make it worth your while. So I appreciate all of you. Thank you so much.
Thank you for the comments. Thank you. Appreciate you.
So I too attended the LOC this last weekend and last year was my first year going and it was pretty wild. I mean, you meet people last year and, and the people remember who you are. And if we could have had bigger signs that said North Bend, it honestly, it was like our names popped up all the time. And even another person that I work with was talked about on, in Vanita, they created a dog park with the help of a railroad. It was, yeah, it was pretty cool. The other thing that blew my mind was about a year ago, I think it was, we had the people coming in here and asking us about building pickleball courts. Did we ever do that?
Yep, there was.
We gotta go. So my wife's son lives in Bend and his girlfriend's family likes to play pickleball and so we went, we checked it out. They have two massive with eight courts in a, in like a box and then there's another eight over here. And so we were on the sidelines and we're, and I'm listening to these people. They have like a pickleball club and they are like, people are coming and going, they're asked, I don't know how many times we were asked if we want to play. No way. I don't show you all up, but I'm playing. But it was amazing because these people were talking and then they're talking about, oh, one night somebody brought chili and somebody brought this food and it was like this whole community of people. And there was one woman who couldn't wait to pawn her kid off because she could spend three days at the pickleball courts. Like it was just insane, this community of pickleball players that was in Bend. And there was one guy that even had a cap and he was out yelling, "Gato, Gato." I'm like, "Is this guy crazy?" And this cat comes running right through the pickleball courts while they're playing and it rode on his scooter when they left. And I was like, "This is the wildest thing I've ever seen in my life." Like I'm sitting there going, "Wow, if we could get something like this going in North Bend, this could be huge just to bring the community together to something to do." And it doesn't look like it's that hard to play, but you know, shoulder injury and everything, I'll just send that out. So, no, it was good.
Look at the softball.
Yeah, I know. So it was all good things going to the conference and.
What was your favorite session?
To be honest with you, it was the opener, the four hours that I thought I was gonna sneak out of, but I was reminded I should probably be in that. But it was good. It, that and also, to be honest, I ended up going to the Alameda Fire thing and I talked about that whole thing. And I mean, we sat here and listened to the whole fire going on through the valley, but it was way bigger than what I even thought about, like how that started and went and ended. And the city works department guy shows up and they made him like, "Okay, you're the guy that's in charge of all this." No fire experience and nothing, just knew how to manage people. And it was amazing. Like I, it was really good. I enjoyed the LOC. You learn a lot, you meet a lot of people and you find out a lot that's going on through the state. So, and it's a lonely world on top and we're on the top, so.
Thank you. Want to start your goodbyes?
If I could.
Where's he going? Yeah.
I was just saying, you got, you got two, a couple of meetings left.
Retirable.
He's got two years.
Yeah, I know, but goodbyes to.
Oh, okay. Oh, you scared me.
Yeah, any else? No, okay. All right, Counselor Schultz, come back to all.
I do want to say congratulations to Sergeant Ryan Doyle. There's a Hillcrest connection. I always love a Hillcrest connection. His sister Sarah Muscaroo is a teacher at Hillcrest and so I've known Ryan for a number of years. When I first moved here, they let me be part of some of their Thanksgivings and so I haven't talked to him in a number of years, but it is congratulations for him to become the chief of police in Coquill. I also will be, I'm sad that I'm gonna miss the special meeting on the 24th because I'll be working as a teacher, so I'm gonna be missing it at the high school, so that bums me out. And then I am, I know we had a discussion last night about the affidavit of Resolution Number 3287, but I am glad that Resolution Number 3287 exists, which declares the city of North Bend stance against racism.
of North Bend's stance against racism, discrimination, and social injustices in our country and our community, because I do, I am glad that it exists. And that is all.
Good, thank you. Okay. All right, Councilor Gall, what do you got? Oh, sorry, Councilor Nora.
Sure. So, I've, I plan to go to, on Thursday, and I, I saw the agenda, and it looks great. There's no council comments, so I wanted, I thought I'd note that it is United Nations Day, and we might say something about that, because I happened to stumble, I was, did a layover to go to an opera in San Francisco, and I'm trucking around town, found City Hall, and people were getting married, getting their pictures. Well, there's this long promenade that has the UN Charter in the concrete. And you walk enough, and, and so you read it, and then comma, "and," and you walk another 15 feet, and it has more, comma, "and," and you keep walking. And then there were these columns, and it has the year that different countries signed on to the UN Charter. And it's the coolest thing. So, we might say something about that to the kids, but I'm looking forward to it.
Be on your home turf, Derek. Councilor Gall.
Just to go on to Hamilton's thing there, we do have quite a group here that plays pickleball. And I think if you guys thought about it next year from July, we believe, you got old Sally Woodman or somebody like that, they would probably put in a, put a big tournament on. I'm guessing they would, especially if you, you know, throw them a popcorn machine or something. Yeah, I, there is a tremendous amount of people around here that plays pickleball. And, and then I want to tell Brownie, thanks for the footballs, that the little plastic footballs, that the Miss Flame deal has always been a hit. And to think about what we used to do at Miss Flame, and they'd give us extra time, and now, Forester's got some stuff happening during halftime, there, there isn't even hardly enough time for it. So, it'd be nice if we could have him kittle up a little one item or something next year to, to give us just a little bit more time. So, that's all I got.
Okay, okay. Well, I was giving him, Councilor Gall, a hard time a little bit, because when you look at the meeting schedule for November, we really only have one meeting in November because of Thanksgiving, and I'm gonna be at a conference, I'll miss that. So this might be, besides our special call meeting on Thursday.
Yeah, I think I was sick that night.
So, the meeting on, the council meeting on the 12th, I won't be here, but I will be at the special call meeting on Thursday, and I'm really looking forward to that. So, many of you guys know that, since I've been actually, even as a counselor, I've been trying to figure out ways to get more youth involved. So this has been a priority for a while, so I'm glad that we're having a, this meeting. I have spoke to the instructor over at the high school, Mr. Hood, and he already had some students that were working up some public comments, and wanted to know what the rules and regulations were. So, they're gonna be able to see real government in action, and then we'll look and see if we can have a follow-up with them at the high school, and maybe a counselors who would want to come over and, and, you know, talk with me and them to see how they thought, what they thought about it. So, on a couple of things, I just want to make sure that I do point out that the League of Oregon Cities did, so they have their annual business meeting and conference that Councilor Jones, Mr. Millar, and Councilor Hamilton and his wife attended. And I wanted to let you know that the legislative priorities were adopted during the board meeting. And if you remember correctly, we as a council ended up pushing, voting on ours, we moved them forward, they tallied those, and then these become the top, they pick usually six or so legislative priorities to advocate for. That doesn't mean that they're not going to lobby and advocate for other things, but these will be the primary focus. And so, I think it's such a great way to see true democracy happen, where every city has a voice. So, the council from Portland, Oregon moved their for, their items forward, just like the city of Hermiston or Condon or these smaller communities in North Bend, so we all got equal voices in this. But the number one, so these are the, League of Oregon Cities finds a following, should be the, I'm gonna read six of them to you, because that's what I screenshot here, but it'll give you an idea. Infrastructure funding, so we all know how important that is, especially if we're trying to do housing and things like that, so infrastructure funding for the communities.
Was that number one around?
It was number one. And it was, when you look at the way, it was like clearly number one. And then, 2025 transportation package, the LOC will support a robust, long-term, multimodal transportation package focused on stabilizing funding for operations and maintenance for local governments and ODOT, so roads. Recreational immunity, if you had been following that one, this is really important, especially to the tourism and beach communities. Behavioral health enhancements, LOC will support legislation to expand access to behavioral health treatment beds and allow courts greater ability to direct persons unable to care for themselves in treatment through the civil commitment process. That was, so recreation community, behavioral health. Then lodging tax flexibility made the top five. The LOC will advocate for legislation that will increase the flexibility to use local administrative and collective lodging tax revenues to support tourism impacted in these services. Like, so they're looking at having flexibility to use towards public safety, infrastructure, and housing-related investments. And I'll just stop with the sixth one, but it was shelter funding for the homeless response to deal with the mandates that were pushed down on each city. So those are the six. You can always go to the League of Oregon Cities page and find out more. I was able to give an incoming speech for the incoming president of the League of Oregon Cities, and one of the things that I spoke about in the speech was how, again, 241 cities were all so different with these varied sizes, but we are kind of all dealing with exactly the same thing. And I've made points before that, you know, the things that we have to deal with, with the mandates that come around from the state, sometimes even impact us more because we have less resources. So, I like to...
Or no resources.
Or no resources at all for those, correct. Anyways, it was a good conference, and I was really happy to see the, those of you who were able to make it there. Last, I just want to end with the Candy Crawl this weekend and all the activities. It's like a whole festival that's happening downtown, with some of the businesses throughout North Bend are participating in a way, instead of, so on Main Street, you have the businesses who are participating, but to do the outreach to all the businesses, they're doing a trunk retreat. So, you know, dress up, or don't dress up, or just go down and support the kids. And so that's fun. So, safe driving, as all these kids are gonna be out in the Halloween days here in the next, you know, few weeks, lots of parties, lots of kids running around on sugar eyes. So that is in my council comments. And that would take us then to any other business, and I don't believe we have any. So then we can adjourn this and go straight into URA. Okay, so council meeting adjourned, and now I'll call to order the North Bend Urban Renewal Agency meeting, October 22nd, at 7:37 here in the council chambers. City reporter, would you like to take a roll call of the commissioners?
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner Hamilton.
Here.
Commissioner Garboden.
Here.
Commissioner Igloke.
Here.
Commissioner Gall.
Here.
Commissioner Schultz.
Here.
Commissioner Nora.
Grusel.
Okay, is there any public comment tonight for URA? There is none. That will take us to number four. Is there a motion to accept that URA, is there a motion for number four? URA.
I make a motion to approve the URA consent calendar as presented.
Second. First from Councilor Garboden, second from Councilor Schultz. Any discussion? All in favor to accept the, the URA agency consent calendar as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Sir, motion for number five, the North Bend Urban Renewal Plan Amendment.
I make a motion, North Bend Urban Renewal Agency forwards the North Bend Urban Renewal Plan Amendment and report to all impacted taxing districts, to the North Bend Planning Commission for the review of the plan's conformance to the North Bend Comprehensive Plan, to the Coos County Commission for briefing, and then to North Bend City Council for a public briefing and a review and vote on an ordinance for adoption.
Second. First from Councilor, first from Councilor Garboden, and a second from Councilor Jones. Any further discussion? All right. All in favor then of the North Bend Urban Renewal Agency to forward the North Bend Urban Renewal Plan Amendment and report to all impacted taxing districts, to the North Bend Planning Commission for the review of the plan's conformance to the North Bend Comprehensive Plan, to the Coos County Commission for briefing, and then to the North Bend City Council for a public briefing and a review and vote on an ordinance for adoption, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Executive Director report.
I don't have one. We've been all focused on what you all just adopted.
Okay, that's enough then. If there's no executive director report, then we'll go ahead and adjourn tonight's meeting.